Good evening and welcome to the City of Pasco, January 6th, 2025, City Council. City Council meeting. The council thanks you for being part of our city government. At meetings, the council takes action, formal action, on items, holds public hearings, and connects other business of the city. You have agendas in the map, and also agendas can be, are available at the City of Pasco website at www.pasco-dwa.gov/agenda. This meeting is being televised live on PSC TV, channel 191, on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and Richland, and streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, YouTube channel, and through the webinar. This and previous council meetings video is available on the city's website. Lastly, the public may submit their comments or questions by contacting the city manager , Seifert, or by using the Pasco, Pasco, Ask Pasco app. So with that, we'd like to get local.
Councilmember Barakas.
Present.
Councilmember Blayto.
Present.
Councilmember Grimm.
Here.
Councilmember Harpster.
Present.
Councilmember Prowlus.
Here.
Mayor Protem Milne.
I am here.
And Mayor Serrano is.
Excused. With that, we'd like to go to the Pledge of Allegiance, so if we could all rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
So with that, we are going to move on to our 2025 Washington State Legislative Pre-Session Update. And so with that, we have Senator Perry Dozier and Representative April Connors here at the council chambers, and we do have some people online. But yeah, I do want to thank you for taking time out of your busy schedules to be here. It means a lot to us. And with that, I think we all know the council, so if we can start off with Senator Perry Dozier and kind of get a little introduction about yourself.
Introductions, maybe what committees you're on?
Okay, yep, very good. Is this on?
Yes.
Okay, yes, thank you very much. I'm entering my fifth session coming up this year. I got the opportunity to represent Pasco when I first got elected, and then with some redistricting and changing, I got moved out of Pasco, and I'm back into Pasco right now. So pretty happy to be back again. And four years ago, I had the opportunity to get some capital funding for, I see we have Martin Luther King Center, and it's coming up again, and so I'll be back there again. Right now, the committees that I serve on is, I've been ranking member on business, financial, gaming and trade. Been ranking on it for four years. I'll be returning to that committee again. Early learning K-12, I've been on that committee for four years. I'll be returning to that again. And my new committees this year is Ways and Means, which is the Budget Committee, and then I'm also on the capital projects. So we'll be looking at a lot of these as we move forward.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Representative Anderson.
Yeah. Hi. April Connors, I'm from the 8th Legislative District, right adjacent to Perry and the 16th. And this year, excited to go back to session. Our House, I'm new to the House Leadership Team this year, was elected by my caucus to be the floor leader, so I'll be running the floor strategy for the House Republicans this year on the House floor. Also remaining Assistant Ranking Member on the Appropriations Committee, which is our state operating budget, which is the big $72 billion budget that keeps increasing every year. And I'm also on the House Housing Committee, as well as the Rules Committee, which the Rules Committee pulls the bills to the House floor for both caucuses. So excited to head back this year. Lots of work ahead, new job to learn, and we'll be working a lot on the state budget together through Ways and Means. Ways and Means and Appropriations are basically the same committee, but called differently in the House and the Senate.
Thank you. Brianna, would you like to introduce the people that are online? I don't have that in front of me.
Yeah, absolutely. So I'm Brianna Murray. I'm with Gordon Thomas Honeywell Government Relations and have the honor and privilege of serving as contract lobbyist for the City of Pasco, which means I get to work with everyone on council, as well as all the state legislators. I think I have a great job. And I will kick it over to Senator King. Senator King, if you can introduce yourself and what committees and roles you have, and then.
All right, let me give that a try. Curtis King, obviously the state senator from the 14th Legislative District. I first apologize for not being there in person. It was my intent to be there. I got tied up on another meeting, and you know how that goes. But anyway, I have been in the Senate for, I will be starting my 18th year on Monday. I have, I am the ranking member on both the Labor and Commerce Committee and the Transportation Committee, and have served on those two committees all of the 18 years that I've been there. I look forward to learning more about Pasco. Fortunate enough, I can say that we provided, I think, I gotta remember the number now, but somewhere around third, a third or more of the funding for the Lewis Street Overpass, which I got to go across several times as we were doorbelling our area. But it's an honor to be with you, even if it's just in teams, and I look forward to meeting each of you personally and working to see what good things we can achieve for the City of Pasco in this coming session. Thank you.
And I see Representative Rude online.
There you go. Hello. I'm Skylar Rude, State Representative for the 16th Legislative District. I've had the honor of representing our district for six years now. I serve on the Appropriations Committee with Representative Connors, and serve as the ranking member on the Education Committee. I've been on both of those committees the entire time I've been in the legislature. This year, I'll be on the Higher Ed Committee. I served on that committee for my first term and then left, and now I'm coming back. I also was elected this year to be Assistant Floor Leader, so I'll be working closely with Representative Connors on our floor strategy, and I'm pretty excited about that. So thank you so much for having us.
And Senator Binkie is joining us. He's let us know that he's ill, so Senator Binkie, if you're able to unmute and say hello, that's great, but if not, because you're ill and just listening in, that's just fine as well.
Thanks, Brianna. I just wanted to say hi to everybody, and thanks for hosting us tonight. My apologies for being there. Didn't want to get anybody else sick, but I appreciate the time because it means a lot. As ranking member on the Energy and Environment Technology, looking forward to continuing work with the City of Pasco as we continue to grow the area opportunities in the energy and environment areas, as well as on higher ed, and of course, Ways and Means. But thanks, Brianna, for hosting us at the City of Pasco.
Okay, well, thank you. We all know you guys have hectic four months coming up, lots of challenges to tackle. And with our time today, we are hoping to review the city's 2025 legislative agenda and learn from each of you what you plan to do to work on during the session. Before we do dive into the legislative agenda, I'd like to offer some introductory comments. First of all, we all know that the state budget will be in front and center during the upcoming session. We know you have many budget discussions and deliberations. We know, let you know that we've been there, done that. It's a challenge to figure out what to cut, how to do this. Obviously, the position you're in, I know it's not easy, so our prayers are for you guys. And with that being said, I did want to say the city council recently undertook the challenge and task of balancing adopting Pasco's 2025-2026 budgets totaling $520.5 million. Despite Pasco's rapid growth, the city's two primary revenue sources, sales and property taxes, continue to lag behind neighboring cities like Kennewick and Richland. With such a revenue discrepancy, it's nearly impossible to provide services at the same level as our neighboring cities. The city has strategically utilized reserve funds to sustain critical programs. However, this approach is not sustainable long-term, and with difficult sacrifices, including delay in the establishment of much-needed special victims units and postponing other key projects, with legislative partnership, the city can achieve its goals of enhancing public safety, infrastructure, and community services while ensuring fiscal sustainability for its residents. The city's budgeting process has also highlighted for us that we rely on the state to be a strong partner in funding projects and delivering city services. As we review the legislative agenda today, we would love to keep, to hope that you keep your partnership front and center in our minds. And with that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Brianna, and so she could get this party started.
Well, thank you, Mayor Protem, and thank you, everyone, for being here. I just very quickly want to orient you to the documents that you have in front of you, and then I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Prowlus to start us on the first item on the legislative agenda. So the front sheet is the top priorities and funding requests that we are asking of you this next session. But then, when you open it up to the second and third page, you'll see that there are several other areas where the city is paying attention to different policymaking that you all are doing in this space. These are items where we're going to be looking to react more to different proposals that are coming forward through the, through the legislature, and these are prioritized based on, or these are categorized based on the council's overall goals that they've established. The, this evening, we're going to spend the bulk of our time talking about the funding requests on the front page, but as we go through the legislative process, you'll be hearing from me on all of the items, on the, the other items as bills are moving their way through the legislative process and are on committees or on the floor. If folks that are participating online don't have the documents in front of you, Holly Sinabria, who many of you know as a member of my team, is online. You can just shoot her a message, and she'll make sure that those online have the documents that we're going to use this evening. And with that, councilmember, do you want to start us off with the MLK Community Center request?
Thank you. First item we're discussing is the Martin Luther King Community Center, Phase Two. This is a capital funding request. And first off, I just want to say thank you to Senator Perry Dozier, Representative Clicker, and Representative Rude for previously getting funds back in 2021, when this was your district at that time. You guys secured $1 million to assist with renovating the MLK Community Center. And as you, all of you guys may recall, the MLK Community Center was originally built in 1976, and is an important community asset to East Pasco, where important programming is being provided through the YMCA, the Benton Franklin Head Start Program, and many more programs. It is adjacent to the Vergey Robinson Elementary School, where 100%, of the student body is on free or reduced lunch. With the $1 million from the state additional funding that we have, we have started renovations on the portion of the building being used for the Benton Franklin Head Start Program. We expect this portion to be completed in 2025. We are now, we are now transitioning our focus to Phase Two of the renovations, and I'm going to be turning it over to City Manager Lincoln to discuss more in great detail. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, you don't have to. I'll be quick. Thank you, councilmember. So the request and the handout and on our legislative agenda for $900,000, this, the approach that we've taken is to take the renovation in chunks, because we found out that it was going to be more than a $12 million project, a $6 million project, as you're probably hearing from most of your constituents who are working on capital projects at the government level. So the second phase will work on three key things, creating a library space, which is really needed in the area, also making ADA-accessible restrooms, and then there's an open-air atrium that's going to be enclosed as a public gathering space. So those are all three critical parts of the development that we're looking at doing in the second phase with the $900,000. Along with that, we'd be looking at grants and other local funding sources to help go along with that $900,000. So we appreciate your time and taking a look at that. We appreciate your support of the first phase of the project. That's been a massive impact for our community. And with that, I'll turn it back over if there's any questions.
It is located in 14th. Yes. So Senator King, and just to make sure you heard that, Rep. Connors asked what legislative district it's in, and it's located in the 14th.
I was going to thank her for that question.
The second item on the list is the City of Pasco is requesting $500,000 to develop a new neighborhood park in the northwest corner of Massey Drive and Road 80, adjacent to Three Rivers Elementary School. This initiative aims to address the recreational needs of a growing residential area currently underserved by local park facilities. If you've been in Pasco a long time, like I have, and raised a family, you can say that there's not a lot of parks in Pasco, and it's definitely difficult for a lot of people. I mean, you have to drive to get to a park, so I would love you to be on board with this. There's basically a three-acre spot, and we'd love to develop it, playgrounds, pathways, stuff that, you know, families or anybody could enjoy. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to our Director Rice, and he can get some more information on this.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So this area is considered, well, we consider a park desert, just a lack of parks in general. The national median average of city lands dedicated to parks and recreation is about 15%. Pasco currently sits only about 3%, so we've been working to actively increase the number of parks within the community. We feel this is a good opportunity. It joins a current school to do that. We have come up with a plan that walking path, children's playgrounds, courts, benches, trash cans, and green bounds to help encourage those in the community to walk to this park area. Are there any questions?
All right, thank you.
Okay, the next request is the Processed Water Reuse Facility. I think many of you are familiar with the Processed Water Reuse Facility, and many of you have visited it. As a reminder, this is a facility located out by the region's food processors and uses wastewater from the food processors to irrigate nearby farmland. As more food processors are coming into the region, the facility needs to be able to access more land in order to irrigate and use the wastewater from an increasingly larger number of food processors. And so we need additional acreage associated with the facility in order to do that irrigation. There's, we need, let's hear, an additional, we have 14 farm circles that are being irrigated right now, and we need an additional five farm circles. Throughout the legislative interim, we have been meeting with the Department of Natural Resources and those associated with the future of the Department of Natural Resources in trying to figure out whether there is some DNR-owned land that can be utilized either through a lease or ownership model in, in order to meet this need. And I would just share that those conversations are ongoing as that agency is going through a transition. So there's no specific ask for you this evening, more an awareness item for you all to know that we need additional land in this area. Money is a factor, but the scarcity of land that's available to acquire, regardless of money, is the bigger factor. So we'll be continuing to have those conversations with DNR and maybe calling on your assistance depending on how those conversations progress. Are any of the 14 circles that you have now, DNR circles, are there? I don't think so. Maria?
No.
Yeah.
I don't know if this is, oh, this is on. All the circles are city-owned at this time, that we are farming for land application. But yes, for future acquisition, looking at options and DNR is one.
And ideally, to get the additional circles, we would, the city would acquire them. That creates certainty for the facility and for the food processors. In conversation with DNR, that legally may not be an option, and so we may be looking at some other kind of long-term lease model, given the legal restrictions.
So Brianna, is this all DNR ground you're talking about to put these circles on? Okay.
The additional five. So the 14 that are currently being used are private, private, are city-owned right now, and then we need an additional five farm circles, and those could be DNR. We could end up finding other private landowners in the area to, to acquire them from as well. Senator King, you have your hand up?
Oh, I lost you there for a minute. I was curious, are there crops being grown on those circles, or how are they used?
They, they are. There are only certain crops, and I would defer to Maria on what those crops are.
Yes, so the crop is, we sell it to uptake nitrogen, and there is a rotation that is engineered for that purpose. It includes corn, alfalfa, potatoes, and then there are some intermediate, like grass-type seeds that are grown in the winter.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the next project, which is the Road 76 Overpass, and I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Grimm.
Thank you so much, Brianna. I get to be Captain Obvious here and remind you guys that Pasco is growing. Kind of reminds me of watching John Madden calling a football game, saying the person that gets the most points is going to win this game. Everybody knows it. Depending on, you know, where you look, I mean, we have a source cited from SmartAssets.com that says where they ate the fastest-growing city in the nation. I've heard the fastest-growing county on the West Coast. I've heard, depending on, you know, who you listen to and what parameters they're using, I mean, it's obvious. We are bursting at the seams here, and why not? We have abundant land, the climate, the, the cost of living is relatively good, but we have a lot of people we got to move around, and we have gridlock in West Pasco, especially in the Road 68 and Road 100 corridor. It's, you know, here, here we have what is really the third-largest metropolitan area in the entire state of Washington. In this area out in West Pasco, we're trying to fix, has the most gridlock in this large metropolitan area, and so we're really asking for your help in that. And so the city has designed this Road 76 Overpass. We'll not design, we're asking money for design and right-of-way acquisition, $5 million for that. But as Director Sarah has put it so well, the fix for Road 68 is not on Road 68. It is alleviating congestion off of there into other areas that is going to help that, and we just, we just really need your help. I know it's going to be a tight year for budget and funding, and this owning a business in that corridor, this is really one of the reasons I got involved at this level, is to try to do something about it. Really just hurt my soul when I would tell somebody I own a business in that corridor, and they would look at me and say, yeah, I tried to avoid that area. And so would really, really love your help to fix this, and it's something I really kind of hit the ground running. One of the very first people I talked to was Senator Binkie here, and he told me, you need to get that on the Benton Franklin Council of Governments list of projects. And Mayor Serrano appointed me to that, and we were able to get that onto there and, onto their list of projects. And also, kind of as a pitch hitter at the last second for Councilmember Prowlus on the Good Roads Association, I was able to go there and provide a vote, but through Director Sarah's advocacy and salesmanship over there, we were able to get that on that list, too. And the good news about that, if you haven't heard, is now, once a project goes on the Good Roads Association list, it doesn't come off till it's completed. So we're really, really excited about this. I want you to think about this as kind of our Duportail road bridge that kind of connects the commercial area with the residential area, because that's what it's going to do. It's too close to the Road 68 core, or the Road 68 interchange to have on-ramps and off-ramps, but it will provide connection between those residences and the commercial area, and alleviate so much pressure off of the interchange and kind of leave Road 68 for just people that want to access Interstate 82. So yeah, just really appreciate your help. I reached out to Senator King before I realized there was going to be redistricting because of his role on the Transportation Committee. I've reached out to all the representatives and senators in the 9th District, who I got to know really well, Schessler, Dye, and Schmick, just trying to really rally support for this project. I even reached out to Representative Barkis in the Centrelia-Shahelus area, so really, again, just trying to rally support and get this project done. It is really needed. It's a multimodal project, so it's going to check all the boxes for pedestrian, bicycles, and vehicles, and just, I guess, it's the big-money project, so I guess, yeah, I kind of got thrown into this one, but would love your help fixing this, if you would, please.
And I see that Senator King's hand is up, which is no surprise, given his role as ranking on transportation.
Well, first off, let me say, I don't worry about what's in whose district. It's about what is the, what's, you know, what are the good things that need to be done, that, that the, you know, this improvement, sounds to me like it would go far beyond whatever district it is in. My question really, though, is, do you have any kind of an estimate as to what the overall cost of the whole project would be?
Yes, thank you, Senator King. It's, it's going to be $35 million altogether. It's $30 million for the bridge, but we need $5 million for planting, for planning and right-of-way acquisition out of the gate.
Very good. That's very similar to Duportail, although that was a few years back, so I'm sure it would cost us much more today, so, but I got it. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. And yes, this is going over an interstate. Obviously, that going over the Yakima River made that a little bit more technical for that, but I really appreciate your help in this. Thank you, Senator.
Councilmember Harpster, you're up next.
Okay. Yes, the next item is a request to analyze the US 12 and A Street intersection interchange and recommend cost-effective improvements and solutions to that area to increase safety. As many of us have experienced and know, that intersection has a lot of high speeds, a lot of freight traffic, and has been the subject of several severe collisions. Even this, this picture on the handout that was provided is a perfect example. You've got two small sedans traveling east, and while they're traveling, there's a tanker truck here already in the process of crossing the highway to get onto A Street with, you know, very little room in the middle to be able to stop and get out of the way of the other traffic. One of my own experiences, I'm a cyclist, and I like using this area to go into Burbank to do workouts there, because there's less traffic. I one time thought I was coming out on Sacagawea Road, which turns into a bike path to cross the river. Instead, came out onto A Street and realized, now I got to ride along the shoulder of the highway, and thought I was going to die that day. And that's just my own experience, but I know several people have similar experiences where there was, you know, danger present. And I know he wasn't able to make it this evening, but please do pass on our thanks to Rep. Clicker for his work on this item. He was able to secure funding for this analysis in previous legislative sessions. It's my understanding the governor vetoed the previous appropriation, but with the new governor coming in, we're hoping that he'll see the need for this and the importance of it. And then, of course, we're pleased to have Amazon's support for this study. Obviously, the two distribution centers coming in really led to this study being even more needed than it already was before. And so the, the port and the COG as well are in support of this, and so we just thank you for your support and efforts in getting funding for this.
Lewis Street Underpass Demolition is next.
The next request is for the demolition of Lewis Street Underpass. This request falls under the category of finishing the projects that we have already started. The 2015 Connecting Washington package, the state invested in developing the Lewis Street Overpass to replace the crumbling, narrow, and outdated underpass that the city to replace the crumbling, narrow, and outdated underpass that the city had inherited from the state many decades ago. We are very excited that the overpass was completed this last year. We are pleased that so many were able to join the ribbon-cutting. Unfortunately, while the overpass is now open and our work on this project is not quite done, we would like to turn it over to Public Works Director Maria Sarah to explain further.
Thank you so much. So for, for this component of the project, really, the, its origin is to be able to work in the right-of-way for BNSF, right-of-way. We were, we entered an agreement with BNSF that included this condition of demolishing the, the underpass, the top six feet of it. And that condition was added at the very last minute in that agreement, towards the time that we were ready to go out to bid. And so the choices the city had were whether we would go out to bid and deal with this added condition as time went by, or we would delay bidding the project at the, at the risk of not being able to afford the bridge anymore. So the city moved forward, and we have been working with BNSF to understand what are the costs that BNSF will incur as part of this work. And we have now found out that it is going to be a big dollar amount, much bigger than we had anticipated, because BNSF has some rights within their own right-of-way to do some of the removal of the trucks and other things that we cannot do with our private contractor. So with all this, this dollar amount that we are requesting is 3.5, I'm going to check that number, 3.3? 3.3 million dollars to be able to do the planning and the demolition of the, of the underpass, including the cost that BNSF will charge the city for the work that needs to be done, that the city cannot do on its own.
The city has applied for a federal grant that we'll find out about.
We hope, any minute now?
During the legislative session. And if the, if we're successful in receiving the federal grant, then the amount of money that would be needed from the state to serve as the match to the federal grant will be quite a bit less, like closer to $250,000 or $500,000. So we either need 3.3 million or $250,000 or $500,000.
Out of transportation or out of what?
That's a great question. I mean, this, so this is associated with the Lewis Street Overpass project, and so I think would generally be perceived as transportation. But it isn't exactly building a roadway. So I think technically it could go through capital. But it would probably, I think to put it through capital would be a bit of a debate with your colleagues. Councilmember Ross?
And last but not least, we have a final request, Broadmoor Boulevard Bike Ped Path. As you know, and I'm pretty sure you've driven through it, we have a brand-new roundabout over at the I-82 corridor. We are asking for, not a huge amount, we are asking for $8 million in construction, for construction of this very important path. It's a multimodal-focused project that would create critical connection along the corridor to support not only the residences, the schools that are in that area, but also the, the commerce and development that is coming within that Broadmoor area. So again, $8 million for the construction of this. And I will share a brief story. Before we had the roundabout, there was kids crossing that, that overpass to make it to Delta High School. One of my, one of my boys was at Delta High School. There was cars passing by to where they could just zip by and knock that kid over the bridge or onto the road. If you drive by now, there's more traffic going on there. We definitely need to do something about that, to make it safer, safer for kids, to make a safer connection across that overpass. So for your consideration, a request of $8 million for that construction. And I'll pass it back to Brianna.
Yeah, I, I want, one thing that I want to highlight on this is that one of the reasons that this project is on the city's legislative agenda is that we do try and recognize the challenges and environment that you guys are working within, in Olympia. And this is a multimodal project that we think will resonate with certain members of the, particularly in the transportation space, who have indicated that they're wanting to make more investments in bike ped facilities in the Tri-Cities region. So this is a project where, if you all see an opportunity to secure funding based on the broader environment in Olympia, we think this would, would sort of fit the, fit the bill. And I see Representative Rude's hand is up.
Thanks. I'm just curious, and I apologize if you mentioned this before and I didn't catch it. Are these projects organized in, in order of priority?
I think that, yes, although I think the projects are also, you, you're talking specifically the transportation projects?
Honestly, all of them. It's, it's a, seems like a pretty ambitious agenda, some large dollar amounts. So if we were having to prioritize them, considering we have different budgets, I, I guess prioritizing within capital and within transportation.
Sure. I can provide just a little bit of the thinking behind the list. So as a result of redistricting, I think Pasco has found itself divided up between three different legislative districts. And so the list is really reflective of that, that division that has occurred. So the capital requests that are outlined, they're in separate legislative districts, separate parts of Pasco. And similarly, the, the transportation projects are all in separate or different parts of, separate legislative districts. I think the councils indicated a really strong, as far as the transportation projects go, a really strong need for the Road 76 over, overpass project as a priority. And then we've been working on both the US 12 and A Street and the Lewis Street Underpass projects for several years. So I don't know if that, I don't think you're going to get a, here's number one, number two, and number three, but that was the thinking behind, behind the list.
Okay, that, that is helpful. The, as, as you know, historically, the legislators for the Tri-Cities area, I think, kind of adopt the region as our own, regardless of which legislative district we're in, and have come together to, to make sure that some of the important projects for the Tri-Cities area are jointly requested between all of our districts, because they're important, serving the region.
Is that something I should respond to?
No, I think you're good.
Okay. You keep looking at me. I think, Adam, you're up next.
Thank you. I, I think, though, the last area that we wanted to talk about a little bit is, we have a, a section of our agenda that goes into Support, Pose, and Monitor. This is several different policy areas that are based on the councils' agreed-upon goals as a, as a body. So I'd be happy to go through them, but I think I actually have Brianna on the menu there.
Yeah, and actually, thank you, Holly. Senator King also has his hand up.
Yeah. Hi, thank you. I, I, I'm, my curiosity is, is, has risen with the Broadmoor Boulevard, because I think with the cap-and-trade policy that was established in '22, and the amount of money that they've been taking in, they have seemed to have spent, or are spending an inordinate amount of money on the West Side on these multimodal projects. And I'm sure they are looking for projects in Eastern Washington. So we'll make sure that this gets before them and see what we can do with it. But I did have a question. I, I probably missed, what kind of money are you talking about to analyze US 12 and, and is it A Street or?
Yes, it's transportation funding.
Wasn't it just $500,000 that they did for the study before, or are you looking for more?
We are looking for more. We're looking for $3 million to do this study now. Yeah, I mean, I, I think that is.
Oh, there it is.
That is the cost estimate based on what Maria has said.
Which microphone I need to use there? That is the cost estimate based on the number of agencies that need to be involved. This is a state facility, but with FHWA involvement and meaningful outreach efforts that will be needed. So it's a lengthy and complex process beyond just the technical analysis that, that of course will also require some experts. So that, that's the cost estimate.
Do you have an estimate on the total cost of the project?
And the reason why is through the planning process, we've learned, working with FHWA and DOT, that we are not expected to come to the table with a preconceived idea of what the solution will be. Instead, we work through the needs and purpose for that facility improvement, and then we find the solution together. And cost is one of the categories that gets planned or evaluated through that process. But it's not the only one. So there are several categories that are looked at, and then if a set of solutions is chosen based on whatever that matrix indicates that is the most efficient solution for the problem that we're trying to solve.
Thank you.
Okay, not seeing any other questions. So City Manager Lincoln kind of introduced that there's these additional pages related to policy issues. And I just wanted to call out some of the specific areas where you all have, are likely to hear from me as bills are advancing through the legislative process. And as you know, bills have begun to be prefiled, so we've started to look at that. For your awareness, when a bill is introduced that has a nexus on city government, we have, city staff review it and provide pretty detailed information. And if it aligns with council's goals, then it directs how we engage with you all in providing input, whether that's just written feedback or, or testimony. If there are ever any bills that you all want the city to testify on or anything at all that you're working on, please share that with us. One, just a few of the areas that I want to highlight where we've been more active, and I anticipate will continue to be active, one of those areas is around public safety. And I think you all are aware that Pasco is one of the locations for the new regional training facilities. And we're, you know, the chief has been, who was he earlier?
He's back there.
He's back there? Oh, you're hiding, I can't see from here. Has, has just been an excellent leader in the region and in the state in helping make that not happen, and is a great resource as you're considering public safety issues. Prefiled for your consideration, this upcoming session are several bills that would be more challenging. But there are also some that would, would be helpful. We're hoping that you all will clarify legislation around juvenile interrogations. And we've seen language prefilled to do that, that we would be supportive of. There's also, really, anything that, that can be done on addressing the opioid and drug crisis and some proposals that have been introduced or prefilled in that vein as well. The, the third bill that I want to highlight is one where we're anticipating some action mid-session, and that is around public defense. I think you all may, you may all be aware that the Supreme Court is considering adopting new public defense caseload standards. And if that occurs mid-legislative session, we're really going to be looking for action from the legislature to help ensure that the city could meet those caseload standards. And there's been a couple different bills introduced, prefilled, to address the public defense. So public safety is a, a big component. Another component is, to totally switch gears, is in the land use space. The legislature has passed over a dozen different bills in the last two years mandating how cities manage their land use code. And the city is in the process of looking, of updating its comprehensive plan and would ask that you all give very careful consideration to additional mandates that you're passing down to the city in light of the comprehensive plan, planning work that needs to be done. And several of those have been prefilled. We're anticipating a, a bill that is impacting lot-splitting, you know, parking, mandates around what happens around bus stops, many different proposals this upcoming session. And then the, the third area that I want to highlight is, I, just in the, in the economic, economic development, economic growth space, Pasco is one of the communities throughout the state that has taken advantage of tax increment financing. And in recent legislative sessions, we have heard of different bills being brought forward in order to negatively impact or mitigate that as a successful economic development tool. And it has really been a beneficial item for the community that we, we'd ask you to retain and ensure that it's something that can be used moving forward. So of the items on this very long list, those are just some highlights to give you some flavor and happy to offer any council members who want to add further commentary or if there's questions on specific bills. But we couldn't cover all of these items this evening in our time together. So I was trying, trying to just give you a bit of a flavor.
All right. Well, that's, I just want to say thanks for your time and being here and hearing the wants and needs of the city of Pasco. We did want to give you guys an opportunity. I don't always want to put people on the spot, but we are going to do that. So, yeah, so let us know how you can help us and if there's anything we can do to help you. So we'll start off, you have two minutes, start off with Senator Perry Dozier.
And I don't know if we have enough time for, for two minutes, so if you don't use two minutes.
I can use 30 seconds, I can use 30 seconds. So I think one of the, the things that I bring to what you guys are presenting before us is, and you were talking about Pasco, well, I, I can just tell you, my father-in-law bought ground in Pasco in 1946 when they started building there on Road 68, and I watched it grow. And he told me one day that someday that Burden Road's going to go to the airport, and I thought he was crazy. And so I've watched that develop in that area north of I-182. I know that we have a lot of challenges there. And so when we talk about the Road 76 overpass, I totally understand that. As for looking through this, water rights, understanding that's one of the things that we dealt with when the city of Pasco was growing and getting those water rights to continue that growth. Where we look going forward to, obviously, I, I was super happy to, to start the process with Martin Luther King Center. Hopefully, we can continue that, Leo, with moving that forward. But, you know, we're just going to have to say, I think this year is going to be a tough year. Obviously, as we all know, there's a great amount of things here to do on transpo. I'm glad that we still have Curtis there. I think Highway 12, A Street area is a disaster, and it's going to pose problems. But I'm super happy to be back with a part of Pasco, representing it again.
Was that 30 seconds?
You told me I couldn't do it, and I didn't.
Now I've got a sort of timer, right?
You get 15.
I, I'm excited to go back to session this year. It's going to be a hard session. There's huge increases to our budget that are being proposed or potentially proposed, as well as a lot of additional taxes, and that's going to come down to individual families. And that's going to come down to individual family members and individuals' pocketbooks. And so our spending, we have a lot of money that comes into our state. We have a little bit of a spending problem right now. And so I imagine our budgets are going to be pretty, pretty tight this year. Talking about the Road 76 project, to me, that's a really exciting project for the city of Pasco. And I'm going to put on Senator King's radar on that project that we just signed or the city just signed with Habitat for Humanity to put 250 affordable homes, Senator King, on that, right where that project is going to be an overpass too, which will be a nice multimodal facility going back and forth across that freeway. And so excited about that project, I think, between the affordable housing and the ability to add more access to the city of Pasco, that's a really good project happening. I work a lot in the housing space, a lot of you already know this, I'm a Realtor by trade. And so the whole, and working on the Growth Management Act, there have been growth boundaries is a big part of what I'm doing in Olympia and will continue to do every session. The other thing that I'm working on that I'm excited about this session is our youth workforce. The Department of Labor and Industries has put a lot of restrictions in place on children working that are between 16 and 17-year-olds in Washington State. And we're working on that, so we're going to try to get some of those restrictions eased up a little bit so our kids can have jobs and not sit home and play video games. So besides just, you know, working in the housing space and other spaces, those are things that is important to me and that I'm working on this session.
Thank you. Senator King, would you like to chime in?
Sure, I very much appreciate the info that you have given us and the projects that you put forth here. There'll be a challenge to get some of these accomplished, but that's why we're here and we're willing to work on it. I just want each of you to know that my door is always open. If there's an area that you think I can help you with, please give me that opportunity. I will analyze it. I'll tell you whether I think I can help you or whether I can't. It's pretty much as simple as that. But I very much appreciate knowing what is, since Pasco is somewhat new to me, knowing what your priorities are and what, what types of things are important to your community. So thank you for that tonight. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Senator King, and go next to Representative Skyler Rude.
I'll be super brief. Thank you so much for having us. I think the projects on your list that really stand out to me are the A Street intersection. We've been aware of that for a long time and done some work trying to get funding for that already. April mentioned this coming session, fighting tax increases. I think that's going to be one of our biggest challenges. Brianna, you mentioned unfunded mandates. That's a no-cost help that we can provide for you. So I know that, a strong believer in local control, I trust our cities and counties to make good decisions at the local level and want to be strong advocates for you in the legislature. So just a quick shout out to Brianna and Holly as your government affairs team. You have some really active and strong boots on the ground here, so I appreciate that.
Thank you, Representative Rude. And that's, we'll finish up with Senator Matt Pinky.
And thank you all. Thanks, Pasco, for putting this together. And again, I can't thank the team enough, Brianna and the group putting it together. Sorry again for being sick and not showing up. It's been a pleasure working with you throughout the interim, walking through the 12th Street. Definitely a safety issue, plus the overpass. I think it's a tremendous amount to get the COG involved. So when you get the BF COG there, don't forget to get them to sign in, to do the hearings, to write letters, to call us, to also show support. But thank you again for having us tonight. Looking forward to working with you.
Thank you, Senator. Really do appreciate it that you were able to attend online and hope you get better. With that, we just want to say thank you for everybody being here. We look forward to working with you and supporting whatever we can do to partnership together. And thank you to our advocacy or however you want to.
Lobbyists.
Lobbyists, yes. Trying to put it in a better word.
Call it what it is.
Lobbyists, okay, we use that word. So we just wanted to thank you for putting this together and for city staff also for putting this together. And so with that, I think we're going to end this portion of the meeting. And then we'll have a 10-minute recess so we can get back up on the daisies and conduct our regular meeting. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you all.
We encourage our officers to identify the underlying issues and work with the community to address the issues with the hope of preventing future incidents. Our patrol officers contact a significant amount of our community every day, and their interactions are paramount in building relationships. Our area resource officers are another branch of this vision. By assigning officers to specific areas of the city annually, we ensure they have the opportunity to deeply understand the needs and concerns of their specific zones. This familiarity doesn't just foster trust, but creates a two-way dialogue where both officers and citizens can share and act on community insights. Similarly engaged are our school resource officers. They play a critical role in ensuring the safety and well-being of our younger generation. By being present in our schools, they not only act as protectors, but as mentors, fostering positive relationships between students and law enforcement. We also boost our community engagement initiatives through more entertaining means, like our Community Engagement K9 Goose. You may also see officers at parks and events pushing around a platea cart laden with frozen treats. Both Goose and our plateas are intended to build friendly connections in the community by creating interactions between the community and our police outside of a typical enforcement contact. Our mission at the Pasco Police Department isn't solely about policing, it's about being a part of the community we're in. To learn more about our community engagement activities or to get involved, don't hesitate to contact us at 509-545-3421, or visit us at the website pascopolice.com. For the Pasco Pulse, this is Lieutenant Thomas Groom. Thanks for watching.
Welcome to the Pasco Specialty Kitchen in downtown Pasco, the heart of culinary innovation in our community. Whether you're a seasoned chef or just starting out, our fully-equipped certified commercial kitchen is here to help bring your culinary dreams to life. At PSK, we offer a unique opportunity for food entrepreneurs to utilize or pass-through windows, a direct way to connect your delicious creations with the community. Getting started at PSK is simple. The process begins with reaching out to our team, who will guide you every step of the way, from the initial application to getting your business up and running in our kitchen. Our application process typically takes 30 to 45 days, allowing us to ensure all permits and licenses are in order. Planning ahead is key to make the most of your time in our kitchen. Our clients come from all walks of life, including bakers, caterers, and mobile food vendors. They all share one goal: to create something special in a space designed for success. To become a PSK client, you'll need a valid business license, government-issued ID, business liability insurance, and contact information. After onboarding, you'll also need a City of Pasco Business Endorsement, food handlers' cards, and a food vendor permit. With a $175 onboarding fee, you'll be ready to turn your culinary vision into reality in a space that meets all health and safety regulations. At Pasco Specialty Kitchen, we're more than just a kitchen, we're a community of passionate creators. We provide the tools, space, and support to help your business thrive. Ready to take the next step? Contact us today, and let's get cooking together at the Pasco Specialty Kitchen.
All right, we are back from our break, and with that, we are going to roll right into Section 5, which is the Consent Agenda. So all items listed under the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine by the City Council and to be enacted by roll call. Vote as one motion in the forum below. There will be no separate discussions on these items. If further discussion is desired by the council members, the item may be removed from the Consent Agenda to the regular agenda and considered separately. So we have 5A: Approval of Meeting Minutes from November 19th, December 2nd, and December 9th. B: We have Bills and Communications approving claims in the total amount of $24,278,924.58, and write-off totaling $15,405.76. Go to Section C, which is Resolution #4548, Project Acceptance of Transmission Main-West Pasco Water Treatment Plant to Zone 3 Project. With that, can I get a motion?
Mr. Harpster.
I move to approve the Consent Agenda as read.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, so we have Harpster and Blaisdell with the second. With that, can I get a roll call?
Yes. Councilmember Braha.
Yes.
Councilmember Blaisdell.
Yes.
Councilmember Grimm.
Yes.
Councilmember Harpster.
Yes.
Councilmember Peralis.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Milney.
And that would be a yes.
Great, passes unanimously.
Thank you. So we're going to move on to Section 6, which is Proclamations and Acknowledgements. I've not seen anything listed, so go to 7, which is Public Comments. The public may address council on any items unless it relates to a scheduled public hearing. This item is provided to allow the opportunity to bring items to the attention of the City Council or to express an opinion on an issue. Its purpose is not to provide a venue for debate or for the proposing of questions with the expectation of immediate response. Some questions require consideration by council over time, and after a deliberate process with input from a number of special, with different sources, some questions are best directed at city, at staff members who have access to specific information. Citizen comments will normally be limited to three minutes, each by the mayor, or Mayor Protem in this case. Those with lengthy messages are invited to summarize their comments and/or submit written information for consideration by the council outside of formal meetings. Lastly, when called upon, please state your name and the city or county residency into the microphone before providing your comments. So with that, do we have anybody in the audience that would like to make a comment? Yes, sir? Just come up to, please come up to the podium, and then there'll be a button you push, and then the microphone will turn red, and you'll be on. Yep, we're all good.
Thank you. Is that working?
Yeah, you're working great.
Okay. My name is Dr. Paul Pagolsky. I'm a retired psychologist. I live at 4319 Desert Place in Pasco, where I've lived for 33 years, and therefore paid taxes for 33 years. My immediate neighbors include, oh, I should probably point out, as I speak right now, I am 71 years old, my wife is 79. Our immediate neighbors are John and Sandy, 82 and 83, respectively, Stacy and Tracy, 64 and 65, although Tracy is disabled, and Dennis and Kathy, who are 74 and 77. This is the third time in five years, I don't know if I necessarily recognize any of you, I don't know if you recognize me, but that I've been before this August group. The most recent occasion was two years ago, and each time, the purpose for me being here is to point out what I consider to be an irregularity as far as snow and ice removal priority from the streets. In the past, I've worked with John Milan, Millar, I'm, I'm sorry. And he was a gentleman and, and, and great to work with, and we were able to, to resolve things. This year, once again, Desert Plateau is not designated as a priority for ice removal. It is a priority one for snow removal. The reason this is consequential is because of the ages and the conditions that I've just represented to you of the residents who live in this area. Now, I have been in contact with a gentleman, and you'll have to forgive me, I don't really understand or know about the bureaucratic setup and who reports to who or what the various offices are called, I apologize. But I've been in contact with a gentleman who is presumably in charge of the prioritization of snow and ice removal. His first name is Tom, I won't list his last name right now. He has indicated that he has absolutely no intention of moving us up in a priority list, although we have been lifted up before. Now, his reasons for doing that are, first of all, there are no sharp turns on my street, and sharp turns receive priority. That's absolutely correct, but none of the parallel streets have sharp turns either. And for 33 years, they've been a priority one. We haven't. Second reason is there are no hills on Desert Plateau.
So sir, I think you have a lengthy thing. I know, trying to get to everybody else, would you be able to wrap it up, or is it something that you could send?
Thirty seconds.
Okay.
We have no hills, that's a priority. We have no roundabouts, that's a priority. Pasco Duce School District has been blamed, and I've been told, oh, it's up to them to set the priority, they deny that, it's completely up to the city. Finally, I've been told you lack the resources because you can't possibly make every street in Pasco a priority one. I get that. So why don't we take one of the streets that's been a priority for 33 years, move them to the back of the line, and let us be a priority one for once? Now, if there's a particular way to go about this, please let me know. If I, if this is the wrong forum to bring this up, I'd appreciate being told where to go. One thing I don't like is not having my emails returned by Tom, except to tell me that he would reconsider things in 2026. So if you have ideas or suggestions, please let me know.
Again, the format is not to answer, to have an answer, but I would recommend, you know, if you have more lengthy, or you'd like to send it to the City Council, then usually, as council members, we do try to contact staff and see what we can do. No promises, but I would say-
Just address Pasco City Council.
All seven members, correct.
One letter or seven letters?
You can send it to the staff, and they'll send it all out to us.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Do we have anybody else in the audience that would like to make a comment, or?
Buck Taft, I live at 4116 Fernwood Lane in Pasco, and I, I don't know how often people come up here and say thank you, and, and things are going well, but I live off Road 100, drive it quite frequently, and the improvements that have been done on Road 100 are awesome. Their major improvement, construction was, you know, a bit painful, but I'm, that's fine. But it really turned out great, very, very thankful, very happy. The traffic really seems to be nonexistent, coming both ways onto Road 100 now, so, just from someone that lives up there and drives it every day, thank you, looks good.
Thank you, I really appreciate that, we definitely don't hear that often, so, so, bless you, my child, put it that way. Do we have anybody else?
Yeah.
Got Mrs. Mahoney there?
Is this on?
Sure is.
Mary Mahoney, Pasco resident, to Pasco via RCW 42.56. Provide a total cost for the Pasco Aquatic Center. The first installation or installment is approximately $5 or $50 million, and ex-Pasco Mayor Matt Watkins has been paid thousands of dollars to find a wow factor. The wow factor is an artificial wave machine that can cost upwards of $25 million excluding installation, maintenance, and insurance, and you need insurance because it's an injury magnet. Compare Pasco's aquatic center with Yakima's Martin Luther King Aquatic Center that's going to open in June, and it's coming in at a cost of $10.8 million. Pasco's CIP budget is well over a half a billion dollars, I understand, and how much of that money is being spent on a low-cost spay-and-neuter clinic at Tri-City Animal Control? A local nonprofit clinic has spayed and neutered 5,000 dogs and cats in 2024. How many dogs and cats has Tri-City Animal Control spayed and neutered in 2024? How much money is going for a low-barrier homeless shelter for people, including for domestic abuse victims with kids and pets? How much money does Tri-City Animal Control receive from WSU for supplying dogs and cats for WSU research? And that has been going on since 4 of 2003 to the current date. Provide a list of all animal control facilities and animal rescues that supply dogs and cats for WSU research, including Washington, Oregon, and Idaho. For a recent list of those suppliers, contact WSU President Kirk Schultz at 509-335-4200, Pasco's Lee Kerr at 509-735-1542, Dr. Guy Palmer at WSU, and Paul Allen School of Global Animal Health at 509-432-3385. Provide a start date for a Tri-City Animal Control Citizens Advisory Board that will cut ties with WSU and all animal research suppliers. The board will introduce and establish, for a first time, due process rights at Tri-City Animal Control, and will transform Tri-City Animal Control from a brutal system of catch-and-kill with unaccountable major theft to that of a real shelter for animals, providing refuge, a low-cost spay-and-neuter clinic, and increased adoptions. My comments are for the record and to put Pasco on notice. My records include my comments on 4119 with Lee Kerr, I, I probably will have to get a subpoena to get those, and comments I made on 12224, as well as all comments on 2024, and comments made by, not by me, but the public on the Eichmeyer-Roundy City Council meeting on 5/23/22.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody else from the audience that would like to make a comment, or?
You want me to press this right now?
The mic is still on, so just go ahead.
Let's see, my name is Celeste Carlson-Stanley, and I'm a landlord in Franklin County and Pasco, and I heard about the landlord-tenant program getting rid of, and I don't know who else landlord has talked about this, but I don't agree with it. So, what, I guess we're not supposed to ask questions, but I'm kind of wondering who's behind it, why it's something that we need to, is even being talked about. I think that you're gonna, if it goes through, we're gonna have, but, I don't want to say bad landlords, but you're gonna have good landlords that are following all the rules, which we do, and then you're gonna have people that just ruin it. And historically, you know, when Hanford hired African-American workers, they were not allowed to stay in Richland, and they came here to Pasco. And if we're writing a program like this, we're not showing equality, we're not showing that we're inviting, and I do know of two mobile home parks that have gone, got away with a lot of horrific treatment of their tenants, including withholding water here in Pasco. Now, I am part of the Renters Association, we have our licensing, we do everything we need to do, so I don't understand the point of writing a program that actually shows that we are inviting to landlords and inviting to our tenants, and we take the best care of them we can, because that's what the association tells us to do. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have anybody else in the audience that would like to make a comment? Not seeing anybody, we'll give it a second round, still not seeing anybody. So with that, we will move on to Section Number 8, which is Reports from Committees and Officers. So do we have any verbal reports from council members? It looks like we got Councilwoman Blaisdell, is that?
I just wanted to comment on Rees Across America. The overwhelming response, we had over 400 people there to help assist us with placing Rees, and I just wanted to really stress how thankful we are for the participation of all the community members, and just the people that took their time out of their day on a Saturday to help us execute such an amazing turnout event to place every single Rees on every single veterans' gravestone. So I just, it was an overwhelming feeling to see all the staff members and all the community members, so I just want to really thank every single person that attended.
Thank you, I know I was there as well, along with Mayor Serrano, and getting away a lot of staff and other members of the community, and yeah, again, it was a, a great event, and it was just good to see so many people care about veterans and the cemetery, and again, I could just say I was really proud to be part of that, and so I did want to say thank you to city staff for putting together such a great event. With that, we're gonna go to Councilman Harpster.
Yeah, thanks. For the break, I attended Hanford Communities Board Meeting, pretty simple meeting, had an update from Brian Vance with DOE, and then he introduced Carol Johnson, who's the new president and program manager of Hanford Tank Waste Operations and Closure, and then just some end-of-year housekeeping items, and there is some concern amongst the board members that this new Department of Government Efficiency is not going to be good for Hanford, there's an idea that they want to speed up the cleanup, and so, David will be paying attention to that and more come. And then also attended Winterfest, and it seemed that there was more people this year than last year, and weather cooperated, so it was a nice little kickoff to the holiday season.
Well, thank you, Councilman Harpster. So we're now going to go to Councilman Grimm.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. I attended a police swearing-in ceremony for new officers with Councilwoman Braha and some of city staff. I was also at the Tri-City's Chamber Legislative Kickoff, did Coffee with a Cop at Starbucks on Road 68, and it was great to see everybody who showed up for that, and of course, the chief serving coffee reminded me of other important people serving at those kind of restaurants, and then also attended the, the last Benton-Franklin Transit Board Meeting of the year, and just kind of just some general housekeeping at that meeting, so, thank you. It was nice to have a break, too, I can say it was good to have some family time, so thank you.
Well, thank you for that report, I also thought Winterfest was really good, I got there a little late, but I did enjoy all the lights, and again, it was good to see that City Pasco staff could put together such good events, and you go down there and the downtown looks really beautiful, so, again, thank you. So with that, I think we're gonna move on to Number 9, which is Hearing and Council Actions on Ordinances and Resolutions Related There, too. Not seeing anything, so we're gonna move on to Number 10, which is Ordinances and Resolutions Not Related to Hearings. So the first one we're gonna, is a quasi-judicial, so it's number 4752, J.C. Water Tower Apartments Rezone from C1 to R4.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. If I could just run us through the script real quick, just to remind us, since it's obviously been a month since we got to go through this thing that we always get to do. So essentially, this is a quasi-judicial hearing or proceeding to render a final decision on materials presented. This is defined as a proceeding which the council defines the legal rights, duties, or privileges of other specific parties, or, excuse me, of the specific parties in a hearing proceeding or other contested proceeding. The appearance of fairness doctrine applies, and the hearing must be fair in three respects: form, substance, and appearance. All council members should consider whether they have potential conflicts as follows: A, a demonstrated bias for or against any other parties; B, any direct or indirect financial interest in the outcome of the proceeding which would affect the council members personally; C, whether there has been any prejudgment of the issues prior to hearing the facts; D, whether there has been any ex parte contact with anyone other than staff prior to this hearing; and finally, E, any other conflict which a council member believes would prevent them from hearing this matter fairly and impartially. If there are any council members that has any of these concerns or disclosures, now would be the time to make those known. Hearing none? Are there any members of the public seeking to disqualify a member of the council from participating in these proceedings? Seeing none, please proceed.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Ferguson. So, we're gonna move on to, so it says Agenda Report from Craig Raymond, Deputy Director.
Thank you very much, council members and Mayor Protem, good evening and Happy New Year. The agenda item before you is a request to amend the zoning of partial number 116140050, also known as LOT 3 of Binding Site Plan 2019-3, from C1 Retail Business District to R4 High Density Residential District. Excuse me. The property is located east of Road 76, west of 68, south of Sanford Parkway, and north of Wrigley Drive. The applicant has requested the change in order to accommodate high-density residential development. The future land use designation is mixed residential-commercial, which provides for a variety of zoning designations from R1 through R4, C1 and O, so the request is permissible in that regard. The property itself is adequately served by city utilities, as well as being well-located on the city's existing transportation network. The zone change request has been before the city's hearings examiner, who conducted a public hearing on October 9th, 2024, and subsequent to the hearing, the examiner did indeed recommend approval of the request, subject to the conditions of approval as laid out in the agenda report. Staff also supports the requested zone change and recommends adoption of Ordinance 4752, providing for a zone change from C1 to R4, subject to the conditions of approval. Thank you.
All right, with that, like you have a motion, and then we can have discussions, so if I could get a motion, Councilman Harpster?
I move to adopt Ordinance Number 4752, amending the zoning classification of certain real property located east of Road 76, west of Road 68, south of Sanford Parkway, and north of Wrigley Drive in Pasco, Franklin County, Washington, from C1 Retail Business to R4 High Density Residential, and further authorize publication by summary only.
Got a second? Got a second by Councilwoman Blaisdell? So with that, do we have any council questions or discussion? I know from 76, and if we get that overpassed, that'd be great to tell those people in that section and be able to move through the city, but I'm not seeing any lights come on, so, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay. So it looks like that passes unanimously. So we're gonna go on to Number B, which is Resolution Number 4550, Setting a Public Hearing for Local Improvements, District Number 152, Final Assessment Roll, and this is gonna be Maria Sarah.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and council members. We are presenting to you a setting of a public hearing date in March for the final assessment for LID 152, this is the sewer East UGA LID. You're seeing a drawing that shows the improvements that were performed, all the projects have been completed and accepted, which now leads us to a final tally of all the costs, and then an assessment to each of the property owners that are part of this improvement district. Next slide, please. So, very quickly taking you back to the formation of this LID in 2022, and then next slide, the preliminary assessment roll that was created at the time of the formation, and you're seeing the original property owners. As we move this, then to the next slide, you'll see that some of those property owners have changed as time has gone by. Ultimately, the cost is just under the original estimation. Next slide, please. And we have some changes in ownership, so we have a- And um, we have some changes in ownership, so we have an updated list of property owners and some of this. Parcels have been subdivided, so the number of parcels has also shifted a little bit. Uh, but all in all, this is a pretty straightforward process and. Right now, you're not looking at dollar amounts or anything, we're just setting the date for the public hearing, next slide please. And a reminder, this, the formation of the L I D was in two thousand twenty-two, in May of two thousand twenty-two. And then through up different actions, we had the design performed for each phase, there were four phases of construction. And then those constructions were completed and accepted, there was a special benefit analysis that was performed and it's. Well underway, just, just about, uh, I believe it's finished, uh, I haven't seen the final report, but I believe it's completed. And then what is coming is um. Uh, today, we'll be setting the date, which is uh, March third for the hearing. And then if that happens tonight, notices will be mailed to each property owner, starting. As soon as tomorrow, within the next uh, week and after that, there is a publication in newspaper, following all. State regulations for L I Ds and then the public hearing will take place here at a council meeting at seven P M. For this item with the ability of those uh, property owners that are being assessed to provide comment on the final assessment. And that is everything and I'm happy to answer questions.
Alright, thank you for that. Um, let's have uh, Councilman Harpster get the motion and then we'll do discussion.
I move to approve resolution number four, five, five, zero, setting a date and place for a public hearing for the final assessment role. For local improvement district number one, five, two, and directing that notice thereof be given in the manner required by law.
Got a second by Councilwoman Blaisdell? So do we have any discussion or questions? I'm not seeing, so, all those in favor, say aye. All those against, say nay. Again, passes unanimously, so let's roll on to number C, which is a resolution number four, five, four, nine. Inter local agreement with the Port of Pasco for Airport Pass, Airport Police Services and Ordinance number four, seven, five, three. Amending the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six operating budget by adding staff to the Pasco Police Department, so we are gonna kick it off with. Chief of Police Ken Roski.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and council members, this is the formalized agreement that uh, we brought. For discussion in December and we've been working with our partners at the uh, port. To take over and assume law enforcement and police responsibilities at the Pasco Terminal, we continue, we've supported. That operation for decades up there and uh, this mutual agreement will um, allow us to put full-time officers. Up there and lays out this I L, lays out the reimbursement and the implementation phase. Uh, with that in the packet, I would, would be happy to answer any questions, I would also note that Director Taft from the airport is here in the audience. If you have specific questions for him, um, but this is uh, just a formalized agreement that we brought to you in December.
Alright, well, thank you for that, do we have any questions before we get into the motion?
No, no questions, I just wanna say, I just look forward to seeing your team represented out there and the presence of Pasco Police stronger in our community, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Grim. Um, so yeah, let's uh, have Councilman Harpster.
Thank you.
Give us a motion.
I move to approve resolution number four, five, four, nine, authorizing the city manager to execute an interlocal agreement. With the Port of Pasco to provide airport police services.
Second.
Got a second by Councilwoman Blaisdell, um, motion by Councilman Harpster, so. Can we, all those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say nay, that one passed unanimously, which will bring us on to the second motion.
I move to adopt ordinance number four, seven, five, three, amending the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six biennial operating budget. Ordinance number forty-seven forty-nine by providing supplement thereto, to provide additional appropriation in the city's general fund. Allocating funding for the addition of four full-time employees to the Pasco Police Department staffing to ensure. Effective collaboration with airport and federal authorities and improve public safety services and further authorize publication by summary only.
Second by Councilwoman Blaisdell, again, the motion was by Councilman Harpster, do we have any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, uh, all those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say nay, again, passes unanimously. Let's go on to number D, which is resolution number four, five, five, one, Fire Training Center Use Agreement. Franklin County Fire District number three, and again, we got another chief here and we got Fire Chief Kevin Crowley.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and Council, thank you for having me, um. In your package, we have an interlocal agreement between the City of Pasco and Franklin County Fire District number three. Uh, what it is is for a use agreement with our training center, um, if you haven't been to our training center, it's located at one thousand eleven East Ainsworth. It's the home of the Tri-City Regional Fire Academy, it also has a burn prop we use, um, a classroom and multiple um. Uh, props that we use to train our firefighters and uh, Franklin three would like to use that, so this is a collaborative effort with them. Uh, it also includes a fee structure for them to help with the maintenance and repair of the, of the facility.
Alright, well, thank you, uh, Chief Kevin Crowley, um, do we have any questions or comments? Looks like none, so I'm gonna ask for a motion from Councilman Harpster.
I move to approve resolution number four, five, five, one, authorizing the city manager to sign and execute. The Fire Training Center Use Agreement with the Franklin County Fire District number three. Located at one, zero, one, one, East Ainsworth in Pasco, Washington.
Got a second by. Councilwoman, uh, Brahas, yeah, it's, everything's always Blaisdell, so. Uh, anyways, so thank you for that and the motion done by Councilman Harpster, so do we have any uh, discussion on this issue? Alright, so if I could get uh, all those in favor, say aye. And all those opposed, say nay, again, pass unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate you for coming. So we're gonna move on to resolution E. Resolution number four, five, five, two, setting a date to consider a notice of intent to commence annexation proceedings for. Urbach Cow Trail Annexation and we are going to have Deputy Director, uh, Craig Raymond.
Thank you very much, uh, the owners of the property that constitute the Urbach uh, Cow Trail Road Annexation have filed a notice of intent. Uh, to petition the City of Pasco to annex the subject property, uh, next slide. Uh, the property under consideration is located east of Road sixty-eight and south of Cow Trail Road. And comprises approximately eleven point three acres as requested by the initiators. At this point, um, in the interest of uh. Uh, moving things along, it's our obligation to set a meeting within sixty days of the filing of the application or the notice. Rather, to ascertain whether the city will accept, uh, reject or geographically modify the proposed annexation. Uh, whether it will require simultaneous adoption of a comprehensive plan, whether it will require the assumption of all or any portion. Of existing city indebtedness uh, by the area to be annexed, uh, it should be notice. Uh, or pardon me, noted, that staff may recommend to the council. Uh, that the G, that we may modify the geographic boundary to include an additional property on the southeast corner of Cow Trail. And uh, Road sixty-eight. Uh, we'll continue to work with the property owner there and uh, we'll have a better sense of feasibility and appropriateness at future. Uh, meetings, uh, next slide. As such, uh, staff requests that the city council adopt resolution forty-five fifty-two. Setting the date of a public meeting for January twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five. At seven P M to officially consider the notice of intent to annex the property, thank you.
Alright, well, with that, uh, let's get the motion and then we'll go on to discussion or questions, so if I get a motion from Councilman Harpster?
I move to approve resolution number four, five, five, two, setting seven o'clock P M, January twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five. As the time and date for a public meeting with the initiators to consider the Urbach Notice of Intent to Commence Annexation. Of property located southeast of the intersection of Road sixty-eight and Cow Trail Road in Pasco, Washington.
Can I get a second? Got a second by Councilwoman Brahas. Thank you for that and uh, the motion was done by Councilman Harpster. So do we have any discussions or comments on this motion?
Yes, yes, if I can just ask one point of clarification, um, Director Raymond, you said the southeast corner. Possibly adding to that, is that, just to make sure I'm falling right, is that the north? Is that like the northwest corner where that one sliver of that residence is, in my?
No, it's actually southeast, um. It, it's, it looks like it is a residence, uh, it's just a little over an acre, maybe one point five acres. Um, on the corner of Cow Trail.
Oh, I see it now, okay, yes, ri- right below there, okay, yep, cool, I just wasn't sure which little sliver, I just wanted to make sure I had the right sliver.
And it's been our understanding that there's been some discussion already amongst the neighbors. Uh, but we haven't really had direct conversation with the property owner, uh, but certainly, it seems to make sense. It completes the Cow Trail Annexation to the intersection and kinda eliminates, uh, you know, on an island, so to speak. So, we like the idea, but we definitely wanna work with the property owner to make sure everybody's on board, so.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mayor Protem. Alright, well, I'm not seeing any other lights, oh, we got uh, Councilman Harpster.
Uh, just real quickly, what's the uh, land use designation of the site, do you know, it's off your head?
I can get that here pretty quickly.
Sorry to put you on the spot.
Yeah, my map is a little bit slow at the moment, loading, it'll take a second. Looks like a little density residential.
Alright, and not see other, any other, we got other?
Just to make the motion, sorry, not a question.
Okay. Uh, you already did the motion. Okay, trying to throw me for a loop there, okay, so uh. If I get all those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. Again, passes unanimously, so we're gonna move on to number F, resolution number four, five, five, three, the Geesa Stadium. Assessment and Assumption of Lease Agreement and this is gonna be by our Director of Fund, Jesse Rice.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Protem, uh, this evening I have a resolution for your consideration to transfer the current Geesa Stadium lease from the previous Dust Devil owners. Northwest Baseball Ventures to the new owners Diamond Baseball Holding. Via an assignment and assumption agreement, uh, which is allowed as part of the current lease, uh, Major League Baseball's approved the sale of the team and current local staff will continue the Dust Devil's daily operations. Uh, with approval of the resolution assignment, Diamond Baseball Holdings will assume the remaining nine years of the initial term lease and can renew for an additional. Tenure term as allowed in the current lease agreement, um, we have uh. Guess Dust Devil staff, we're still, yeah, Dust Devil staff here in the, uh, this evening, in case there's any additional questions that I can't answer and with that, do you have any questions?
But uh, before we get to motion, I guess, do we have any questions? No, so, um, let's roll with the motion, so we're gonna go with Councilman Harpster.
I move to approve resolution number four, five, five, three, authorizing the city manager to execute an assignment and assumption of lease agreement. Between Northwest Baseball Ventures, one LLC and D V H Tri-City LLC. In the City of Pasco for Geesa Stadium.
Second.
Got a second by Councilwoman Blaisdell and we got a motion by Councilman Harpster. Uh, just make sure, was there any questions or comments on this motion? Not seeing none, or I guess we have one?
Yeah, just real quickly, I uh, was nervous when I first saw this news and um, talking Britten there this evening, um. In between and just glad to see that the two of them are gonna be staying on board and um, still working for the team, so uh, looking forward to seeing what uh, what changes. Um, this new group may bring.
Thank you for that tidbit of information, I do appreciate it, uh, got Councilman Grim.
Thank you, and my sentiments are similar to Councilmember Harpster's, just as far as are you guys keeping your affiliation with um. The, the A's and all that, okay, so, yeah, no, they're the angels, yes, sorry. That's probably pretty painful, sorry, thank you. We all need grace, thank you.
Alright, well, thanks for the good laugh there, um, all those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say nay, again, we got another one that passes unanimously, so thank you for that. So we're gonna move on to number eleven, we got unfinished business, I'm not seeing anything, got number twelve, new business. Do we have anything, not seeing anything, and now we're gonna move on to uh, miscellaneous discussion, I know we'd like to. Talk about John Fu- John Funfar, um, he's been with there seems like forever, at least as long as I've been on council. And uh, guy does an excellent job and somebody that I'm glad to call my friends. So I would now like to open it up to Mr. Adam Lincoln, I know he'd like to say some few words and then hopefully some of the other council members would like to say something as well.
Thank you, Mayor Protem and Council, um, just wanted to say some things about Mr. Funfar and his. Thirteen plus years of service for the City of Pasco. Um, he's, he's done a whole lot with the, the city, he's, he's really modernized the department, he's, he's really brought it forward as far as how we communicate. Um, social media, how we do news releases, uh, our video content, um, there's, there's a lengthy list of things that even in just the. Brief time I've, I've worked here with, uh, with John, that I've seen the, the, the things that he's been able to do and the, the timelines that he's able to work within, so. Um, I, I think special notice of his work that he, he undertook during the, the COVID crisis that we faced. Was a particularly stressful time for, for him and the team and um, he, he handled the communications with a lot of poison grace there. Um, he's, he's also won several awards on, on behalf of his work with the city, including from Natoa. And I'm sorry, I don't know what that completely stands for, you're the past president of Watoa, correct?
That's correct.
Um, you've uh, won Hometown Media Awards in two thousand eighteen and two thousand twenty-three. And um, it, it, it really comes down to just, he's, he's hardworking, he's fun to work with. Um, he's, he's put Pasco TV on the, on the map and uh, we will, we will certainly miss him being part of our team. Thank you for your service to the city.
Thank you. Well, thank you, uh, we're gonna start off with uh, Councilwoman Ross.
I wanted to kick it off, John, because you need to really hold on to something here, no, I'm joking, I, you know, John, um. When I was the mayor and before that, when we were going through COVID, you did not miss a step. You were always there, you were present, you were very professional, you have been very professional, so I wanna say thank you, um. We sat through several videos that I needed to record for greetings or, or you know, to send off to, to different delegations. But I wanna say thank you for all your, your work, your dedication, your passion for Pasco, I mean, we just mentioned. A plethora of awards that you've received, so you know, it's, it's gonna be very hard to not see you. In that little room, um, and, and guiding us i- in our marketing, guiding us in our, in everything, everything that you do. So I just wanna say thank you for your time in Pasco.
Thank you. Alright, well, thank you, uh, we're gonna go to uh, Councilman Harpster.
Yeah, just quickly, I uh, my very first meeting a year ago, I was out of town in California, had to join remotely. And was having some issues and I was freaking out, sweating and John's response, I was on the phone with him on our cell phones, response was just, okay, let's figure this out. And you know, I'm freaking out, so like, okay, we got this, whatever, and the whole time it was just, alright, now let's do this, let's do it, so very calm, cool and collected. And uh, that's been my experience with you for the last year, so uh, good luck in your next role and I know uh, it'll be great.
Thank you, thank you. Well, thank you, um, yeah, I can just say all the years that I've been here, the six years, that you've been very professional and again, I've. Every time I've had a problem, which luckily hasn't been too many, but uh, the times that I have, you've been able to work through it in a very timely manner to. Get me on, whether it was with uh, again, Zoom or whatever and uh, again, I really appreciate you, every time I think of professionalism, I think of you. You're always Johnny on the spot and again, I really appreciate you, I will miss you, uh, I know we don't talk a lot, but again, I really appreciate your. Hard work and dedication and, and I can see it, how you handle yourself, that you're really a guy of integrity and a guy that really loves his job and. And loves the City of Pasco, so you will be missed and again, I want to say thank you. Well, thank you, Ma- Mayor Protem and the uh, City Council, uh, first of all, I wanna. Thank you all for your strong support of the communications program here uh, throughout the years and uh, certainly this group and the previous council members. And uh, uh, leaving the uh, team in good hands with Alyssa and Laurel and uh, they will continue to uh, provide. Exceptional service as you've come to expect and uh, yeah, it's been my uh, definite privilege and honor serving the community and uh. Look forward to my new, new role at, over at uh, W R P S, but uh, yeah, we'll definitely miss uh, miss the city, so thank you very much. Well, thank you and again, good luck to your future endeavors, thank you. Thank you. Alright, with that, I think we're gonna turn it back to.
Couple more updates, we'll, we'll keep it quick, uh, Director Rice had a, an update first.
Uh, good evening again, I wanted to provide a quick update of our December event since we were off most of that month. Uh good evening again. I wanted to provide a quick update of our December event, since we were off most of that month. I had a lot of activities going on. Um. As mentioned earlier, uh we've had our um Reese Cross America, which is a great event. We're able to provide nine hundred fifty wreaths or one to every veteran grave and um. And we're blessed to have about four hundred volunteers and help get all those uh put out in about forty-five minutes, so we're very thankful of the community for that. Um we also did our annual Boys and Girls Club Build a Food Box Drive, which uh with both staff and FedEx, who we collected a hundred sixty boxes of winter break meal kits. And snacks for the Pasco clubhouse students, so that's a great thing we do every year. Um, we also had our STCU Winterfest at Peanuts Park with performances by local groups and students, uh the Middleton Farms Grain Train. We had food, vendors, visits with Santa and the Grinch. And then, of course, our heritage tree lighting. Um the heritage tree is ultimately planted over in Capitol Park. Um also want to say thanks to our Fairchild Movie Theater, uh which had combined attendance of more than four hundred people at both the Wednesday and Saturday free movie showings, where they also provided free popcorn to every attendee, so that's awesome to have that partnership with them. And then last, we held our forty-sixth Annual Cable Bridge Run with over twenty-two hundred registrations, which is our largest since uh two thousand twelve, and we actually had a. Little over twenty-one hundred actually check in, which is which is ninety-five percent. That's a great number for people actually turn out that day, so. Uh lots of great events, lots of community participation, lots of time by staff, um so all those are great things, and then also want to thank. Uh all of our community sponsors and partners for making these events great for us, so thank you.
And then Chief Roski, I think, had a quick update as well.
Yes, just wanted to make sure council is aware that we'll be changing our front lobby hours at the police department. Um starting um this Friday, we'll be open Monday through Thursday, closed on Fridays. With um re- reduced hours, opening at eight and closing at uh four thirty. This is just to allow our staff to process um. Um papers and information in a timely manner through that. Um but the police department won't be closed. You can still access us twenty-four seven um through your uh through your phone, calling nine-one-one, we'll still be there. You just may not be able to get the police report on Friday or your fingerprints, so a- a- as you might have, you might have to wait till Monday, so thank you.
All right, well, thank you for that, and uh do we have any council members? That looks like we're gonna start off with Councilman Harpster.
Yeah, first off, I'd love for all of our meetings to go the way this one did. We got through like six resolutions in twenty minutes or something. Okay, not trying to to make any announcement or anything, but with Mr. Ferguson's decision to terminate his contract later this year. I've had a couple of short discussions with Mr. Lincoln regarding that, and I think we need. As a council to give direction to staff on. What we want to do next, where we want to go, whether it's continuing with the uh setup we've had the last several years, or hiring in-house counsel, and so. Um looking for some short discussion on that, and maybe we put it on agenda in the future. It's going to. Take a while to replace Mr. Ferguson, and so I think uh we need to get that discussion started as soon as possible. Um so that we uh don't have too much of a of a lapse.
All right, well, thank you for that, Councilman Harpster. Uh did you want to chime in with your opinion was, or?
Yeah, my opinion would be that we look into hiring an in-house attorney. Um not just one, but uh, you know, I don't know the exact terms, maybe a senior and a junior and. Um, I uh just think that's the way to go with the size of city that we're at, and. There's a lot of cities in the state much smaller than us that have in-house counsel. Um this has worked for, you know, the the uh time that we've done it this way. But I think we need to take a hard look at perhaps changing up the way that we've done it. Um it obviously don't want to only have a discussion, I but definitely would want to hear from Mayor Serrano. Um and others, but that's my personal opinion.
Okay, are we asking to go down the line for each councilman, or do you want like an email, or what would you like to do?
Uh email is fine if you guys want to have the conversation, that's that's fine. Um I think staff just needs direction if there's a desire for presentation. What what information would help you in in making that decision on what you'd like to see?
I know sometimes with the cost, uh I know that's kind of the big thing when you're. You know, over budget, and we only have so much money, and now we're taking money from reserves. I would like to know. You know, what it's gonna cost us. My point is, you know. If moving forward, if what we're doing is the least expensive, I mean, obviously you want the best services, but you also don't want to add two employees if we can't even. Afford what we have now, so uh but uh. I would say for the time constraints, let's just uh if you can send out an email, and we could each chime in and maybe give us a week. Uh, um that's what I would appreciate, but I know Councilman Grim had his light on. I don't know if you wanted to.
No, I was just gonna concur with Councilmember Harpster that I, you know, it would be nice to have a. Some type of brief presentation. I guess where I'm starting from, I would think in-house would be best too, but. I also, I think he started his presentation with saying we need to get on this, and the sooner the better, and I think that's um imperative. Thank you.
Okay, well, uh I'm on and uh definitely respond within a week, but if we could have maybe some idea of what we're looking at for this. Financially, that would be helpful for me to make my decision.
Happy to send that out.
Okay, well, thank you. Uh do we have any other comments by any members of the council? We'll go to Councilman Grim.
Thank you. I just, you know, in li- light of the presentation, knowing everything we're gonna hear tonight, um uh just. A couple of, I I wouldn't be fair to say mixed signals from from the group before us. But one one of the things that they we heard is that again and again is that money is gonna be tight this year, and their ability to fund projects is gonna probably be. Small, but yet at the same time, we heard perhaps a a priority of the the ruling party over there for bike ped crossing and. Multimodal transportation like that, but I wanted to propose to you guys, not necessarily to make a decision tonight, but. Potentially, we withdraw our request for funding for the Broadmoor Bike Ped Crossing over I one eighty-two, and the reason for that is I sit on. Uh that Ben Franklin Council of Governments Board, and one of the things I'm hearing from the state of Washington already, the Department of Transportation. Is their concern about the Broadmoor Interchange already being overwhelmed, and it's only a matter of time till that needs updated too. Perhaps the dream would be to a diverging diamond is kind of the ultimate, like they're doing with Interstate ninety and SR eighteen right now. It's already been. Very successful, kind of where I grew up in the Olympia area at Marvin Road there, um right by the Cabela's there that eliminates left-hand turns. And puts puts everybody through that way, so that that's part of it is why are we throwing eight million dollars at something, even if it is the state's money at. A a project that in a matter of years may need to be upgraded already. And then just the other point of it, one of our big issues and one of the issues I ran on was gridlock in West Pasco. And I could see our constituents pushing back pretty hard when a new. Overpass gets put in for pedestrians and bikes, even though there is a safety need there. But if we were to not accomplish anything else as far as alleviating some of the traffic that we have, I could just see um. I think the citizens, even myself, would just wonder where our priorities are at that point, so anyways, that's that's kind of my ask of you guys. Is just so that we can really dial in to what I think are more important projects, like the um. A Street Interchange with Amazon and everything out there, and of course, the Road Seventy-Six Overpass too, and withdrawing this from our ask. Just so it gives our legislative body a clear priority and, you know, less they can ask for, because. I did get the feeling from them, we have a pretty full list here, so thank you.
All right, thank you for those comments, and I'm sure we'll take it under consideration and uh. Email and uh see what we can do to move forward or where our direction is as a council. Um any other comments? I'm not seeing any. So with that, we're gonna move on to number fourteen, which is executive session. So it looks like we do have need for it to consider site selection or acquisition of real estate property. Purchase or lease if likelihood that disclosure would increase price per RCW forty-two point three zero point one one zero. And discussion with legal counsel about current or potential litigation per RCW four-two point three zero point one one zero. Looks like we need twenty-five minutes, so that would bring us back at nine twenty-eight. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lieutenant Thomas Groom with the Pasco Police Department, and I'm here today to discuss how we as a department work to not only be in our community, but to be a part of our community. Our philosophy is grounded in community-oriented policing. We believe that the best form of security arises not just from simply patrolling the streets, but from building bridges with our residents. Through community engagement, we continuously strive to forge partnerships that lead to a safer and better quality of life in Pasco. Beginning with our primary service, patrol, we try to demonstrate this philosophy. Rather than our officers simply responding to calls for service, handling the call, and moving on to the next task. We encourage our officers to identify the underlying issues and work with the community to address the issues with the hope of preventing future incidents. Our patrol officers contact a significant amount of our community every day, and their interactions are paramount in building relationships. Our area resource officers are another branch of this vision. By assigning officers to specific areas of the city annually. We ensure they have the opportunity to deeply understand the needs and concerns of their specific zones. This familiarity doesn't just foster trust, but creates a two-way dialogue where both officers and citizens can share and act on community insights. Similarly engaged are our school resource officers. They play a critical role in ensuring the safety and well-being of our younger generation. By being present in our schools, they not only act as protectors, but as mentors, fostering positive relationships between students and law enforcement. We also boost our community engagement initiatives through more entertaining means, like our Community Engagement Canine Goose. You may also see officers at parks and events pushing around a platea cart laden with frozen treats. Both Goose and our plateas are intended to build friendly connections in the community by creating interactions between the community and our police outside of a typical enforcement contact. Our mission at the Pasco Police Department isn't solely about policing. It's about being a part of the community we're in. To learn more about our community engagement activities or to get involved, don't hesitate to contact us at five zero nine five four five three four two one, or visit us at the website, pascopeleague.com. For the Pasco Pulse, this is Lieutenant Thomas Groom. Thanks for watching.
Welcome to the Pasco Specialty Kitchen in downtown Pasco, the heart of culinary innovation in our community. Whether you're a seasoned chef or just starting out, our fully-equipped certified commercial kitchen is here to help bring your culinary dreams to life. At PSK, we offer a unique opportunity for food entrepreneurs to utilize or pass through windows, a direct way to connect your delicious creations with the community. Getting started at PSK is simple. The process begins with reaching out to our team, who will guide you every step of the way. From the initial application to getting your business up and running in our kitchen. Our application process typically takes thirty to forty-five days, allowing us to ensure all permits and licenses are in order. Planning ahead is key to make the most of your time in our kitchen. Our clients come from all walks of life, including bakers, caterers, and mobile food vendors. They all share one goal: to create something special in a space designed for success. To become a PSK client, you'll need a valid business license, government-issued ID, business liability insurance, and contact information. After onboarding, you'll also need a City of Pasco business endorsement, food handlers' cards, and a food vendor permit. With a one hundred and seventy-five dollar onboarding fee, you'll be ready to turn your culinary vision into reality in a space that meets all health and safety regulations. At Pasco's Specialty Kitchen, we're more than just a kitchen. We're a community of passionate creators. We provide the tools, space, and support to help your business thrive. Ready to take the next step? Contact us today, and let's get cooking together at the Pasco Specialty Kitchen.
Curious about where your property tax goes? Our property taxes support all kinds of basic public services like schools, ports, hospitals, social services, public safety, and facilities that you use on a daily basis. And yet, when we live in a city, only a small share of the property tax actually goes to the city. It pays for things like police officers, firefighters, streets, sidewalks, parks, and a vibrant main street. Each of us use many of these services every day, and others, well, we're happy when they're around in times of need. Businesses and visitors may want quality services. City property tax only increases one percent each year. The problem is that Washington's population is growing much more than one percent. In fact, by two thousand twenty-five, more than eight hundred thirty thousand people are expected to move here. And most will live in cities. And then there's inflation, the price increase of specific items over time. For cities, the cost of inflation or the cost of providing services grows faster than one percent. Simply put, property tax does not keep up with rising inflation and population growth. We all want to live in a vibrant city, so let's work together to make sure property tax keeps pace.
Cable access channels are critical tools for local government. They provide important information about issues, services, and programs, as well as local emergencies. They also allow you to watch your local elected officials in action. Through the provision of governmental access channels, our communities are kept informed, educated, and entertained. Where else can you get information about your local government? Make sure everyone has a voice. Support your local government access channel.
Welcome to this edition of the Pasco Pulse. I'm Michael Hinao, Environmental Compliance Coordinator for the city of Pasco. You can expect to see more trucks along Foster Wells Road in the coming weeks. As they deliver millions of gallons of material to the Process Water Reuse Facility, or PWRF. This facility takes processed water from food processing plants and turns it into water that can be used to irrigate agricultural fields. The PWRF can already process about one billion gallons of water from food processing plants every year. But with their goal set to open in the coming months, and other processors expanding their operations, the demand is about to get much higher. That means this facility has to be expanded. The upgraded PWRF will provide a more complete treatment for the processed water before its use for irrigation. That will make it better for the environment and should make us smell better too. What does this have to do with those delivery trucks along Foster Wells Road? They're bringing in millions of gallons of material to kickstart our anaerobic digesters. We will have two digesters, each digester is thirty-four million gallons. Where microorganisms will help clean the water from food processors, those microorganisms also create renewable natural gas. Which will be collected and sold to a local distributor. The next step in cleaning the processed water takes place in a greenhouse. Where we will use algae to remove some of the nitrogen from the water. Algae also takes up carbon dioxide out of the air, helping us breathe a little easier. Finally, the treated processed water will be stored in newly-expended holding ponds until it's needed for irrigation. The upgraded facility is scheduled to be up and running by the end of this year. You can find more information about how this project was funded on the city website. For the Pasco Pulse, I'm Michael Hinao.
Welcome to the Pasco Sporting Complex, the perfect venue for softball and baseball tournaments of all sizes. With six recently upgraded fields, our complex is designed for top-quality play, making it tournament-ready nearly year-round. Our dedicated maintenance team works tirelessly to ensure the fields are always in pristine condition, so your tournament can run smoothly from start to finish. But that's not all. The complex offers a full experience for both players and families. Enjoy our splash pad and playground, keeping everyone entertained between games. Plus, grab a bite at our convenient concession stand, perfect for refueling after an exciting game. Easily accessible for major highways, the complex features plenty of convenient parking and is just minutes away from hotels and restaurants. Ensuring your team and fans have everything they need nearby. Book your next tournament today at the Pasco Sporting Complex, or great games and unforgettable moments happen.
Have you noticed things getting crowded lately? Washington's popula-
Washington's population is growing. By 2025, 833,000 people are expected to move to Washington State. That's the equivalent of another Richland, Vancouver, Tacoma, Spokane, Bellingham, and Yakima combined, or 12 packed Seahawk stadiums. Two-thirds of the state's population already live in cities, because cities are where we live, learn, work, and play. State law actually encourages growth in cities to preserve our farmlands and open spaces and to be efficient with your tax dollars. And this means that in many cities, budgets are already stretched thin, and we need to figure out how to serve our growing population. More people living and working in cities means more demand for services like parks, transportation, police, fire, water, and sewer. All these things cost money. Growth is happening. We all need to work together to plan and pay for it.
Pie Sharks began just as a love for baking. I went back to college when the pandemic hit, used my GI Bill from the Air Force to help pay me to go to school, and over the course of it, started baking for fun and found out that I really loved it, really enjoyed it. When I started making pies, I found that little mini extra ones I made with extra dough ended up being better than the big ones. So came forward with a few individual-sized miniature pies, so you can get a custom mix of flavors. So I've been here at the Specialty Kitchen since the beginning of July, and we're now entering into our second month of operation in this space. In another year, I'd love to have a few more people onboard. I'm working on getting connections with different coffee shops and other locations around the Tri-Cities so that we can have unique flavors at each of those locations, start distributing them to those different areas. You may even see some that you can only get at those locations. For instance, Cafe de Arte, right around the corner over here. We've discussed having some things like a devilish egg pie that I made that's really good with coffee and those combinations, where you may not be able to get it here in our shop, but when you go to those specific stores, it drives us both to them and to us at the same time. One of our best flavors that we've had for a long time has been the jalapeno cream cheese with bacon. As soon as I say those words, people are like, "A jalapeno popper pie?" I'm like, "Exactly. It's 100% what it is." And I always try and swap around the flavors. I switch out one sweet and one savory every week to change things up, and whichever was the lowest performing is what gets swapped. And that jalapeno bacon cream cheese, it's never coming off the menu. It's stayed on there permanently. Get a lot of really positive review on cheesecake that we make as well. It's no bake, real creamy, and the lemon has been a big pop as well. Pie Sharks is a small, family-owned operation that is excited to grow and develop here in the Tri-Cities, and I look forward to providing delicious treats to anyone and everyone who has a hankering for pie.
Hello, everyone. I'm Ben Zieggen with the Tri-City Animal Shelter. We have some exciting news for all pet owners out there. We know how stressful it can be when a beloved pet goes missing, and we're here to help. That's why we've launched our new online Lost and Found Pet Reporting System. This system is a straightforward way for you to report if your pet has gone missing. Just visit our website, fill out a simple form, and your lost pet report will be up and running. It's quick and effective, ensuring your pet's information is shared with the right people immediately. But there's more. Our website now features an interactive map for found pets. This means if someone finds a lost pet, they can report it on our site, and it'll show up on the map. If you've lost your pet, you can check this map to see if someone has already found them. It's a great way to connect lost pets with their owners, quickly and efficiently. We're really proud of this new tool and believe it's going to make a big difference in reuniting pets with their families. At the Tri-City's Animal Shelter, we're not just about sheltered animals. We're about keeping them safe and ensuring they're part of our community. For more details, check out our website at animalsheltertc.com or feel free to call area code 509-545-3740. We're always here to help. Thanks for watching this edition of Pasco Pulse. This is Ben Zieggen, wishing you and your pets a safe and joyful day.
Hi, I'm Lieutenant Thomas Groom with the Pasco Police Department. And I'm here today to discuss how we as a department work to not only be in our community, but to be a part of our community. Our philosophy is grounded in community-oriented policing. We believe that the best form of security arises not just from simply patrolling the streets, but from building bridges with our residents. Through community engagement, we continuously strive to forge partnerships that lead to a safer and better quality of life in Pasco. Beginning with our primary service patrol, we try to demonstrate this philosophy. Rather than our officers simply responding to calls for service, handling the call, and moving on to the next task, we encourage our officers to identify the underlying issues and work with the community to address the issues with the hope of preventing future incidents. Our patrol officers contact a significant amount of our community every day, and their interactions are paramount in building relationships. Our area resource officers are another branch of this vision. By assigning officers to specific areas of the city annually, we ensure they have the opportunity to deeply understand the needs and concerns of their specific zones. This familiarity doesn't just foster trust, but creates a two-way dialogue where both officers and citizens can share and act on community insights. Similarly engaged are our school resource officers. They play a critical role in ensuring the safety and well-being of our younger generation. By being present in our schools, they not only act as protectors, but as mentors, fostering positive relationships between students and law enforcement. We also boost our community engagement initiatives through more entertaining means, like our Community Engagement K9 Goose. You may also see officers at parks and events pushing around a platea cart laden with frozen treats. Both Goose and our plateas are intended to build friendly connections in the community by creating interactions between the community and our police outside of a typical enforcement contact. Our mission at the Pasco Police Department isn't solely about policing. It's about being a part of the community we're in. To learn more about our community engagement activities or to get involved, don't hesitate to contact us at 509-545-3421 or visit us at the website pascopeleague.com. For the Pasco Pulse, this is Lieutenant Thomas Groom. Thanks for watching.
Welcome to the Pasco Specialty Kitchen in downtown Pasco, the heart of culinary innovation in our community. Whether you're a seasoned chef or just starting out, our fully-equipped certified commercial kitchen is here to help bring your culinary dreams to life. At PSK, we offer a unique opportunity for food entrepreneurs to utilize our pass-through windows, a direct way to connect your delicious creations with the community. Getting started at PSK is simple. The process begins with reaching out to our team, who will guide you every step of the way, from the initial application to getting your business up and running in our kitchen. Our application process typically takes 30 to 45 days, allowing us to ensure all permits and licenses are in order. Planning ahead is key to make the most of your time in our kitchen. Our clients come from all walks of life, including bakers, caterers, and mobile food vendors. They all share one goal: to create something special in a space designed for success. To become a PSK client, you'll need a valid business license, government-issued ID, business liability insurance, and contact information. After onboarding, you'll also need a City of Pasco business endorsement, food handlers' cards, and a food vendor permit. With a $175 onboarding fee, you'll be ready to turn your culinary vision into reality in a space that meets all health and safety regulations. At Pasco's Specialty Kitchen, we're more than just a kitchen. We're a community of passionate creators. We provide the tools, space, and support to help your business thrive. Ready to take the next step? Contact us today and let's get cooking together at the Pasco Specialty Kitchen.
Curious about where your property tax goes? Our property taxes support all kinds of basic public services like schools, ports, hospitals, social services, public safety, and facilities that you use on a daily basis. And yet, when we live in a city, only a small share of the property tax actually goes to the city. It pays for things like police officers, firefighters, streets, sidewalks, parks, and a vibrant main street. Each of us use many of these services every day, and others, well, we're happy when they're around in times of need. Businesses and visitors may want quality services. City property tax only increases 1% each year. The problem is that Washington's population is growing much more than 1%. In fact, by 2025, more than 830,000 people are expected to move here, and most will live in cities. And then there's inflation, the price increase of specific items over time. For cities, the cost of inflation, or the cost of providing services, grows faster than 1%. Simply put, property tax does not keep up with rising inflation and population growth.
So we are going to extend it. Initially, we talked about coming back at 9:28. Let's do seven minutes, so it'll be 9:35.
Cable access channels are critical tools for local government. They provide important information about issues, services, and programs, as well as local emergencies. They also allow you to watch your local elected officials in action. Through the provision of governmental access channels, our communities are kept informed, educated, and entertained. Where else can you get information about your local government? Make sure everyone has a voice. Support your local government access channel.
Welcome to this edition of the Pasco Pulse. I'm Michael Hinao, Environmental Compliance Coordinator for the City of Pasco. You can expect to see more trucks along Foster-Wells Road in the coming weeks as they deliver millions of gallons of material to the Processed Water Reuse Facility, or PWRF. This facility takes processed water from food processing plants and turns it into water that can be used to irrigate agricultural fields. The PWRF can already process about 1 billion gallons of water from food processing plants every year. But with their goal set to open in the coming months and other processors expanding their operations, the demand is about to get much higher. That means this facility has to be expanded. The upgraded PWRF will provide a more complete treatment for the processed water before its use for irrigation. That will make it better for the environment and should make us smell better, too. What does this have to do with those delivery trucks along Foster-Wells Road? They're bringing in millions of gallons of material to kickstart our anaerobic digesters. We will have two digesters, each digester is 34 million gallons, where microorganisms will help clean the water from food processors. Those microorganisms also create renewable natural gas, which will be collected and sold to a local distributor. The next step in cleaning the processed water takes place in a greenhouse, where we will use algae to remove some of the nitrogen from the water. Algae also takes out carbon dioxide out of the air, helping us breathe a little easier. Finally, the treated processed water will be stored in newly-expended holding ponds until it's needed for irrigation. The upgraded facility is scheduled to be up and running by the end of this year. You can find more information about how this project was funded on the city website. For the Pasco Pulse, I'm Michael Hinao.
Welcome to the Pasco Sporting Complex, the perfect venue for softball and baseball tournaments of all sizes. With six recently upgraded fields, our complex is designed for top-quality play, making it tournament-ready nearly year-round. Our dedicated maintenance team works tirelessly to ensure the fields are always in pristine condition so your tournament can run smoothly from start to finish. But that's not all. The complex offers a full experience for both players and families. Enjoy our splash pad and playground, keeping everyone entertained between games. Plus, grab a bite at our convenient concession stand, perfect for refueling after an exciting game. Easily accessible for major highways, the complex features plenty of convenient parking and is just minutes away from hotels and restaurants, ensuring your team and fans have everything they need nearby. Book your next tournament today at the Pasco Sporting Complex, or great games and unforgettable moments happen.
Have you noticed things getting crowded lately? Washington's population is growing. By 2025, 833,000 people are expected to move to Washington State. That's the equivalent of another Richland, Vancouver, Tacoma, Spokane, Bellingham, and Yakima combined, or 12 packed Seahawk stadiums. Two-thirds of the state's population already live in cities, because cities are where we live, learn, work, and play. State law actually encourages growth in cities to preserve our farmlands and open spaces and to be efficient with your tax dollars. And this means that in many cities, budgets are already stretched thin, and we need to figure out how to serve our growing population. More people living and working in cities means more demand for services like parks, transportation, police, fire, water, and sewer. All these things cost money. Growth is happening. We all need to work together to plan and pay for it.
Pie Sharks began just as a love for baking. I went back to college when the pandemic hit, used my GI Bill from the Air Force to help pay me to go to school, and over the course of it, started baking for fun and found out that I really loved it, really enjoyed it. When I started making pies, I found that little mini extra ones I made with extra dough ended up being better than the big ones. So came forward with a few individual-sized miniature pies, so you can get a custom mix of flavors. So I've been here at the Specialty Kitchen since the beginning of July, and we're now entering into our second month of operation in this space. In another year, I'd love to have a few more people onboard. I'm working on getting connections with different coffee shops and other locations around the Tri-Cities so that we can have unique flavors at each of those locations, start distributing them to those different areas. You may even see some that you can only get at those locations. For instance, Cafe de Arte, right around the corner over here. We've discussed having some things like a devilish egg pie that I made that's really good with coffee and those combinations, where you may not be able to get it here in our shop, but when you go to those specific stores, it drives us both to them and to us at the same time. One of our best flavors that we've had for a long time has been the jalapeno cream cheese with bacon. As soon as I say those words, people are like, "A jalapeno popper pie?" I'm like, "Exactly. It's 100% what it is." And I always try and swap around the flavors. I switch out one sweet and one savory every week to change things up, and whichever was the lowest performing is what gets swapped. And that jalapeno bacon cream cheese, it's never coming off the menu. It's stayed on there permanently. Get a lot of really positive review on cheesecake that we make as well. It's no bake, real creamy, and the lemon has been a big pop as well. Pie Sharks is a small, family-owned operation that is excited to grow and develop here in the Tri-Cities, and I look forward to providing delicious treats to anyone and everyone who has a hankering for pie.
Hello, everyone. I'm Ben Zieggen with the Tri-City Animal Shelter. We have some exciting news for all pet owners out there. We know how stressful it can be when a beloved pet goes missing, and we're here to help. That's why we've launched our new online Lost and Found Pet Reporting System. This system is a straightforward way for you to report if your pet has gone missing. Just visit our website, fill out a simple form, and your lost pet report will be up and running. It's quick and effective, ensuring your pet's information is shared with the right people immediately. But there's more. Our website now features an interactive map for found pets. This means if someone finds a lost pet, they can report it on our site, and it'll show up on the map. If you've lost your pet, you can check this map to see if someone has already found them. It's a great way to connect lost pets with their owners, quickly and efficiently. We're really proud of this new tool and believe it's going to make a big difference in reuniting pets with their families. At the Tri-City's Animal Shelter, we're not just about sheltered animals. We're about keeping them safe and ensuring they're part of our community. For more details, check out our website at animalsheltertc.com or feel free to call area code 509-545-3740. or feel free to call area code 509-545-3740. We're always here to help. Thanks for watching this edition of Pasco Pulse. This is Ben Zieggen, wishing you and your pets a safe and joyful day.
Hi, I'm Lieutenant Thomas Groom with the Pasco Police Department, and I'm here today to discuss how we...
Late there, sorry about that. With no other things on the agenda, I'm going to call this meeting adjourned. Thank you for coming.